All right, everyone. I want to welcome everyone to the Wednesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, regular meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum present?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Next up, we have invocation and pledge of allegiance by Aiden McCray, Max McCray, Vivi Wasson, and Andrew Wasson.
All right, so if everyone can join me in prayer. So, oh God, as we gather for this meeting, we thank you for allowing all of us to be together in good health. As we welcome a new council member, please grant wisdom to this body to make the best decisions for our city. May you help new graduates from the Jersey Village High School in their transition to a new journey, and please bless the city as a whole, and especially our first responders who risk their lives every day to keep us safe. And finally, for those who have sacrificed themselves in service to our country, state, and city, help us to remember and honor their legacies on Memorial Day. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you so much. Next up, we have election items. The first item is Consider Ordinance Number Two Thousand and Twenty-four dash one-three, canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general election held on May fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, for the purpose of electing three council members, place one, place four, and place five. Okay, council members, at this time, you may open your envelope at the dais. Okay. In reviewing the precinct reports, we have the following totals. We have the, we have for council member place one, Drew Wasson, mail-in ballots forty-five, early votes five-hundred, election day votes two-hundred, for a total of seven hundred and forty-five votes. For council member place number four, V. Pham, received five mail-in votes, four early election votes, two election day votes, for a total of eleven votes. Connie Rossi received twenty-four mail-in votes, four hundred and eight early votes, one hundred and twenty-six votes on election day, for a total of five hundred and fifty-eight votes. James Fields received twenty-nine mail-in votes, two hundred and eighteen early votes, one hundred and forty-nine election day votes, for a total of three hundred and ninety-six. Council member place five, Jennifer McCray, received forty-six mail-in votes, four hundred and eighty-four early votes, one hundred and ninety-eight election day votes, for a total of seven hundred and twenty-eight votes. And that was from a total of nine hundred and sixty-six ballots cast during the election. The official canvas of the returns for the general election held on May fourth, two thousand and twenty-four reflects that the following persons were duly elected to their respective positions. Council member place one, Drew Wasson, council member place four, Connie Rossi, council member place five, Jennifer McCray. At this time, I would welcome a motion to approve ordinance number two thousand and twenty-four dash one-three.
I'll make a motion to approve. A second.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes. This completes the canvas of the general election held on May fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, for the city of Jersey Village, with a total of nine hundred and sixty-six voters. The next two items, actually, we've got, yes, the next two items, items C-two and C-three, will be taken together. And so if the, the re-elected council members and our council member-elect had come forward in front of the dais. Okay, and then the next item is C-four, recognition and presentation of service award to James Singleton, outgoing council member place four, for his years of service to the city of Jersey Village. All right. Well, this one, I think, is always, it's always a little tough when somebody you've worked with now for six years is leaving. I thought a lot about what I wanted to say about James. The thing that I think that I will probably remember most about working with you on council is, people like to say that council always votes together. James and I know for a fact that they don't, because we have over the last six years, many times, well, maybe not many times, but on some very high-profile votes, been the two losing votes with three voting the other way. And I appreciate that, because I always knew that when there was something that I thought was important, that he thought was important, James was always going to be right there with me in the thick of it, even if we knew we were going to go down in a blaze of glory in a three-two vote. That said, years go by, and some of the things that we were on the losing side of a three-two vote wound up happening, such as, I think the biggest one probably is homestead exemption. I know I consider it probably one of the things that I'm most proud of, I'm sure James probably would say the same. This guy was there from day one, and he was behind that concept, and we got it done. And that's just an example of the kind of guy that James is. He's, he's gonna, when he thinks that something's the right thing to do, and he thinks it's something that the community would benefit from, he'll keep fighting until either, you know, turns out you just exhausted all options, or you get it done. So, James, I'm going to miss you. You've been a huge help to this council and to this city, and knowing the way you are and your servant's heart, I have no doubt that this is not going to be the last I see of you. So, congratulations, thank you so much.
Well, my wife said I had to keep this short, and I left my notes up there, so this might be short, it might be long. Thank you very much, Mayor. Yeah, very true. Not thirty minutes ago, I was arguing for something that I might be the only one on. I really appreciate our time together. Drew, if you don't subscribe to Drew's emails, you need to subscribe to Drew's emails. I'm not allowed to get them, because I was on council. But I got added to the list two weeks ago, and I'll tell you, his emails are really good. I have really enjoyed my time with several, everybody in the current council, all of y'all, and discussing things, but also some cornerstones like Frank Marr, Rick Faircloth, Curtis is normally here. Greg Holden taught me a lot about council, and that was very, very helpful. And it's also good to be challenged, and to know if you're in the right spot, and I really appreciate that. We have the best city secretary out of all of Harris County. That woman is amazing. Austin Bleeth has been a blessing to this city that people don't even know. We will never understand how much he's done as a leader for this city. And Isabel Cato has been my friend since probably two thousand and eight, when I was here the first time. And I'm going to miss seeing you every month. But all of the staff is fantastic. I enjoy Justin, your replacement, Bridget, is better, but, but your input is, not, your input has been great. All of the staff is fantastic here, I appreciate all of them. But that, that's minor in comparison when you think about all that my wife's done. I have served a lifetime in council. For y'all that don't know this, Bridget, or Beatrix, Beatrix is six years and one day, because the day I was put on council was the day that Beatrix was born, and she was born on Delosier, and a couple hours later, I ran over here and sworn in and went to a meeting. And my wife has stood there and listened to me debrief council meetings for probably a collective month. And I appreciate all the time that y'all spent and the compliments Felicity still, she'll say, well, that, that's your sidewalk, Dad. Very, very supportive family. So, it's not goodbye, it's see you later. Feel free to call me, I'm still around.
All right, folks, we're going to take just a few minutes recess to allow everyone to get settled in, and then we'll resume the meeting. And also, there are drinks and whatnot over here, if y'all would like to, I think there's I don't know. 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 Okay, I think we're gonna go ahead and resume the meeting. Thank you, guys. I appreciate y'all's patience. That brings us to item D1, Presentation of Employee of the Month Award for May 2024, Austin Bleese, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, tonight I am honored to announce Gloria Hale, our incredible building custodian, as our employee of the month for the month of May 2024. Gloria, come on up.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to read from her nomination. Gloria's dedication to keeping all facilities sparkling clean and her cheerful demeanor are truly infectious, and we're so happy to recognize her outstanding contributions. Since stepping into her full-time role, Gloria has hit the ground running. Her meticulous work ethic and commitment to excellence are evident in every corner of all of our facilities. Whether it's a gleaming hallway or a spotless office, Gloria takes immense pride in ensuring our facilities are in top condition for everyone who walks through the doors. Her impact goes way beyond just her cleaning expertise, though. She's a true team player who consistently goes above and beyond. Need a hand setting up for an event? Gloria's there with a smile, ready to lend a helping hand. Preparing the civic center for court? Gloria ensures everything is ready and organized. Transforming City Hall for a special occasion or birthday celebration? Gloria's creative touch adds a decorative flourish that brightens the atmosphere. So no matter the task, Gloria approaches it with a positive attitude and a willingness to help in every way she can. Gloria, your hard work and dedication and positive spirit are truly appreciated by everybody throughout the city. Congratulations on being named Employee of the Month. You are a shining example of being a great team member for our community. Congratulations.
We're gonna move on to item E, Citizen Comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the City Council will be heard at this time. In compliance with the Texas Civic Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the City Council. The first card I have is from Rick Faircloth.
I'm Rick Faircloth, 1601 Lakeview. Congratulations to all the new council members who, I've been there, I know how it is, and I'm not saying I'll try it again, but I'm still around doing other things. The other issue is that we had a lot of discussion last month about the closing of the bridge at the golf course. I personally have been here 45 years, and I've thought a lot about it. With the safety issues that have always been brought up, and I've brought up some of the safety issues myself, I think the best interest of the city, and even though it's been a convenience for a lot of people, I think the best thing is to close it to vehicular traffic and reconstruct it for walking and for the golf carts from the golf course, not to be used as a cut-through for people who own a golf course, a golf cart. But I really think that's the way we ought to go forward. In seconds, budget time, don't forget about the over 65s and some help with their exemptions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Next comment card I have is from Andrew Mitchum.
Good evening. Just wanted to say a couple of words about James Singleton. Just want to say thank you very much. Got to serve with him for a few years on council, as council and mayor. But I think one of the best things I can say about him is he's a fantastic dad. The freeze of 2021, you remember that very, very well. We were at the brewery when all heck broke loose, and everyone was without power, and James showed up with his entire squad of Singleton's, and they did everything. And it's just great to see. They poured water, they boiled water with me. We couldn't have done what we did for everybody without you guys. And, you know, I love my kids, and when people tell me I'm a great dad, that's the biggest compliment that I can get. So I just wanted to say, you're a great dad, and please don't be a ranger. Come by the brewery, don't be a ranger, fix my glycol again. And we'll see you around, man. Thanks, appreciate it. And congratulations, Connie. Appreciate all you did for your campaign, and hope you do great things. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Andrew. The next comment card I have is from Robert N. Linda Hamm.
Thank you. I really wasn't sure we were gonna get to speak today. This is the first council meeting my wife and I have attended. We've been living in this city for 15 years. You guys are doing a great job. We love living here. I also wasn't prepared for how nervous this would make me. Anyway, we would like to ask that you consider keeping the golf course bridge open. I realize the gentleman over there was imploring you to close it. It is a big inconvenience, and it's a huge traffic jam over on Village Drive, and during certain times of the day, it's very difficult to get in and out. It's the only entrance to Jones Road. Everything is on Jones Road. And we, as the citizens of the city, you know, we go there for food, medical care, just general shopping. Everything is on Jones Road, and having only one entrance to Jones Road from the entire subdivision is sort of, just seems silly. So that's really all I have. I mean, I read your letter, Mayor Warren, and 1,300 cars a day, that sounds like a lot, but think how many citizens that is. I mean, we realize it's not, all 1,300 cars is probably not all citizens, but even if it's half, that's 600 citizens a day that you're affecting. So anyway, that's really all I have, and thank you for listening. And again, keep up the good work. We love living here. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. The next card I have is from Ashley Hart.
Good evening. I attended the budget meeting in Arago, so this is a repeat for some of you. But I'm Ashley Hart. I live in Wyndham Village, and I am the president of Cravens Warren Insurance here, just on the edge of JV. And I am a licensed risk manager in the state of Texas. So I wanted to speak a bit about the golf course bridge situation and how the last meeting had a lot to say about safety concerns, and I wanted to address some of those concerns. So what I heard in the last meeting was that most of the council is leaning towards not keeping the bridge open, and a lot of what I'm hearing is because of safety concerns. I really think that you guys should consider that seriously, because my proposal, which I'll get into in a second, about having a one-way street, egress only, is not utilizing the existing blacktop parking lot in order to drive through it, but is to create a street, a one-way street, to the right of where the existing parking lot is. And there could be a grass median between the parking lot and the street, which would then physically separate the parking lot from the street itself. And I know that there's also some concern about pedestrian traffic and golf course cart traffic over the existing bridge. I emailed council and the mayor, as well as City Manager Bleese, some photos just representative of my ideas. And I think either with some hedging or some metal fencing, that could be largely mitigated. So I urge you guys, before you just blame it on safety, to really consider the options there. Also, I really appreciate what Austin put together as far as proposed options that council should consider. I have another option that I would like considered. I'm calling it follow existing right-of-way egress-only option. My thought is to build a one-way street that would go out from Rio Grande to Jersey Meadow and allow the egress traffic to get out of the Rio Grande side over onto Jones Road. As I mentioned earlier, I really have observed that the traffic backup is really from Village Green area, turning on to Jones right. And also, that doesn't really give us a left-hand turn onto Jones Road, where if you created an egress-only option out from Rio Grande to Jersey Meadow, that also gives the people back, Winnebago, that area, as well as your golf course traffic from customers there, the ability to get out onto Jones Road more efficiently. Using the budget figures that Austin had in his budget memo, using the existing bridge, instead of creating a new bridge, you could eliminate 3.8 million of the proposed 6.2 that Austin had in his two-way option. And the total cost, using his estimates, was $2,579,277. So when you guys are in budget meetings and perhaps the two-way options are eliminated due to budget constraints, perhaps a $2.5 million figure is more palatable than $5 or $6 million. So I ask that you guys strongly consider that as you continue these conversations. Please don't rule it out because of safety. There are ways around that that would effectively address your concerns for the safety, while at the same time perhaps giving some of us back there in the west corner the ability to get further, better access to Jones Road. On a separate topic, I just wanted to mention that I was a member of the 2020 Comprehensive Plan Committee. I found that work to be very interesting, and it does give a great roadmap for the city to follow for the following years. It gives important insight into the direction the city is moving in, and it really creates a great guide for city officials and council, considering both infrastructure, safety, community engagement, and quality of life in that plan. So I know that applications are now being accepted for the 2025 Plan Committee. I think that any citizen who wants to have a say in the future direction of the city should consider being a part of the committee. And just FYI, applications for that committee are due by June 5. If anyone has any questions about my experience on the committee, I'd be happy to talk to them, and I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much, Ashley. The next comment card I have is from David McGwin.
Thank you, Mayor Warren. And my name is Dave McGwin. I live at 16508 Village Drive, the street we've been talking about most of the evening. It is a busy street. I saw an email come across my computer a couple days ago where the city was considering taking the parking away from both sides of that street. And I'm here to speak for every resident on that street. That is not a solution. It's gonna create more problems than you can ever imagine. That street is utilized by lawn care people that have to park their vehicles on that street to service all those houses. It's not gonna cut down on the cut-through traffic. It's probably gonna increase it if we take the parking away from both sides. I think there are a couple of good solutions that I've been hearing about, possibly either widening the street or putting some off-street parking on the other side of that street, where we can actually park vehicles for family and friends and visitors and other people that come to our homes on that street. I've been there for 29 years. The traffic has not been a problem. I was warned when I built my house over there that you probably need to reconsider this, and I built it anyway, and I have not reconsidered it for the entire 29 years. It's a great place to live. We've got a great city council that I really appreciate all the hard work that all of you do for all of us in the city. And please, please consider other alternatives other than taking that parking away on both sides, because it is gonna create some additional problems for all of us and possibly the city. I thank you for the time.
Great, thank you, Dave. The next comment card I have is from John Hacker.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. John Hacker, live on Cornwall Street. Been there 24 years. I would like to see the bridge stay open. I do use it, have ever since we've lived here. I understand the safety issues. My biggest thing is if it does stay closed for pedestrians and carts only, then I would like to see it be able to be used for vehicles if there's an emergency, God forbid a fire or something major, where first responders have to come in off of Rio Grande and you have to evacuate the parking lot there on the golf course side of the bayou. That could turn into a big melee. Please consider using the bridge to get cars out, send them out towards the other parking lot, towards Jones Road. So first responders come in, do what they need to do, get people out, keep them safe. At the same time, I know Ashley mentioned the second road there. I'm kinda on board with all that, too. I'd like to see something, my opinion would be to bring one off of the parking lot on the north side of the bayou towards Rio Grande. Bring it in to connect it towards the north side of the bridge. I know you'd have to lose part of the dog park there, which is massive to begin with, and probably a couple of trees. But that also could be something, you could have a gate at each end of, just like we did when we were using the cut-through on the golf course. It could be opened early in the morning, closed in the evenings, and possibly by the same people. Again, that's a small logistical tactic that could be worked out. But having two-way traffic, again, access to Jones Road where everything is for that end of the neighborhood, I think would be a good thing. And you could close it off at night and not have anybody just coming in, just like we did with the golf course when we were using it in that capacity. So please consider that, and thank you all for your time.
Great, thank you. And the last comment card I have is from Kimberly Anau.
My name is Kimberly Anau, and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane. As my 32nd installment, Jersey Village is not just a small town, but a thriving community that began as Clark Henry's F&amp;M Jersey Ranch from 1938 to 1948. In the 1950s, the 1,279 acres of cow pasture began to transform into a suburban oasis, becoming an incorporated city on April 16, 1956, with the unanimous 58 resident petition against Houston's immediate annexation. After the last few local election cycles, it seems many villagers are not aware of how our city government works, plus the people and land changes that occur over time, including local, county, and state laws and expectations. The population in 1961 was 493, while the 2020 census advised of 7,921. That may sound daunting, but the acreage of the Jersey Ranch was only 1.997 square miles, which would pretty much only be the original houses, which is not a lot for a tax base. So during the decades, annexation of adjoining land occurred to grow to 2.163 acres as 3.38 square miles, which includes many retail establishments with grocery seats helping our tax revenue. Being a city in Harris County in Texas, there are many regulations, laws, and procedures to abide, such as city elections being nonpartisan. Our mayor and council positions are volunteered as an unpaid, so they still have their day jobs in addition to the countless hours of reading, questioning, learning, and abiding by our home rule charter. The two city employees that report directly to the mayor and council are the city manager and city secretary. This form of local government is also called manager council, which enables full control over development of our zoned city and keeps politics and overreaching out of the daily functioning of the city departments. The The city manager is the chief administrative and executive officer of the city and is responsible for the efficient and economical administration of city government, including employees. The council shall enact ordinances, adopt budgets, determine policies, appoint the city manager, and execute other powers and duties as prescribed in the charter, which was established in 1986. The charter further authorizes the council to elect a mayor per term, which serves if the mayor is unavailable, yet maintains the right of voting as typical of council, while the mayor can only break a tied vote. Mayor and council are not allowed to instruct or request the city manager to appoint to or remove from office or employment any person. Procedures of governmental meetings include the Open Meetings Act, as it requires meetings of governmental bodies to be open to the public except for expressly authorized closed or executive sessions, and to be preceded by public notice of the time, place, and subject matter of the meeting, such as consulting with the city attorney, deliberations of real property, personnel matters, and economic development negotiations. Only members of the governmental body and necessary officers and employees are allowed in closed meetings. A governmental body may adopt reasonable rules regarding the public's right to address council, such as to the subject of the meeting, impose time limits, and prevent disruptions of the meeting. A single public comment period is to be at the beginning of an open meeting to address items on the agenda, though council may, but is not required to respond. If the public raises a non-agenda item, Section 551.042 of the Act still applies to limit response comments about non-agenda items. Texas also allows reasonable rules to maintain order at a meeting, as the city website advises. No one shall delay or interrupt the proceedings or refuse to obey the orders of the presiding officer. Citizens and other visitors are to observe good conduct and refrain from private conversations that distract. If anyone wonders how the city of Jersey Village functions, the facts are available if you ask concise questions, so there is no misinterpretation. City, county, and state legalities exist for a reason. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kimberly. Okay, those are all the comment cards I have. So we're going to move on to item F, the city manager's report. Austin Blais.
Mayor and councilors, the report is in front of you. Happy to answer any questions you might have on that. I would also like to take a moment and recognize Laura Capps, who was honored by the Texas Municipal Association, the Human Resources Association, as the Lone Ranger Award. A person of one, a department of one doing great things across the state. It's a great honor and honor to recognize her here tonight.
Austin, you don't make her wear a mask like the Lone Ranger.
Thought about it.
On a serious note, one of the agenda items on consent, which unless somebody brings it out, I don't know that needs to be talked about, but had mentioned some issues with my gov and back and forth. Have we looked into that, and is that truly an issue?
It seems like there might have been an issue for a few days. Not sure if it was a backend or if it was a user error. Not really positive on that one, but one of the things in the budget we're looking to do is to get a little bit to help out with some of that stuff.
Thank you.
I wanted to bring up some questions about code enforcement. I, I feel like we're not doing a very good job. So I will tell you this. I had a, I know you guys are fully aware how I feel about signs in people's yards that should not be there, like from roofers, for instance. I had a roofing sign in my yard for five weeks, and I never once was contacted by the city for a code violation.
So there was some concern about the Supreme Court ruling from a few years ago and whether or not that was enforceable. Justin did get back to us, and we are going through now and enforcing that a little bit more, but there is, there is some concern about some of the legalities surrounding the signs and those types of things.
Okay. For me, it's the fact that I don't think it's just the, I'm using the sign as an example because the sign is like my legit example. And it was kind of a thing for me. I was like, well, let's see. Let's see how long it's going to take for me to get my letter in the mail or for someone to pick it up and put it on my porch, and it never happened. In fact, a neighbor kindly picked it up for me in their own personal code enforcement, which I actually appreciated because it was driving me crazy myself. But it's also stuff, you know, there's overgrowth of bushes in certain areas of lots. I'm not seeing stuff taken care of in a timely manner. I'm just curious, as far as our, you know, what are we doing to make sure that we are actually enforcing the ordinances?
So we do monitor where the code enforcement officer goes. They are going down every street every week. I'm sure there's spots that do get missed, but we do have the app. People can report those things. People can email us, call. You know, I know that they're out there, but then again, they're not perfect, for sure. I absolutely, we'll give you that one for sure. But that's why we have all the other ways that people can report issues as well.
I'm just going to ask a quick clarification-type question, maybe almost a legal question. With our code enforcement ordinances, I know there are a lot of procedural hoops to be jumped through. Are those hoops that we have made of our own making without prompting from state law? Or are those required by state law?
I mean, there's so many ways that different types of codes and things. So generally, you would call the things we're talking about here nuisance issues. So that's where you have, there's weed issues or junk, you know, junk vehicles, all those kinds of things. Your code is, like many others, that labels those general things as nuisances. And then depending on, there is some state law guidance on some of those issues, but you have, I mean, again, it's a super general, but you have a process to abate those things. And generally, it's a notice, some kind of notice to the property owner, gives them time to fix whatever the issue might be. And then depending on if that's complied with or not, then there's the ability for the, for the city to come in and abate that. And again, there's a lot of different ways that could go depending on what the actual nuisance is. But your code's no different than that. I mean, it's, there's some general scope that comes in the state law that allows you to address certain things, and you've done that, and then you provide the abatement process. And so it really is, it's just, it's an enforcement of it. And some of it, a lot of things, like most, most abatement and most nuisance issues, it is complaint-driven. So if, really, if you see something, say something, and that's what, probably the more effective way that a code enforcement officer is going to be able to respond to something, so.
So I, to make sure that I understand, are those, that that process where notice is sent and then a certain amount of time is given to remedy it, is that something that is imposed upon us by state law? Or, I mean, I understand that it's similar to other cities, but if we wanted to streamline that in some way, is there an option?
You could theoretically do it. I mean, I think that, and again, I don't, it's hard to talk without specifics on things here, but in general, you need to send notice about something and get people an idea of what it is they're violating and give them opportunity to cure that issue, whatever it is. And that's going to be across the board. But depending on what the particular issue of state law would guide you on that, it may require a longer period for abatement. Sometimes it can be pretty short. But from what I've read on your code, it's your, that's why I say you're right in line with what most cities do, because you, you're going to fall within the really, I mean, generally considered, you know, appropriate times for abatement and response and all of that, so.
And obviously, I don't, I don't want to get too far down the line, because obviously, I think I'm kind of pushing the boundaries from an Open Meetings Act standpoint. But if this, if, if this was, is something that council wanted to look at more closely, we could certainly look at putting this on a future agenda just to have the discussion in more detail.
And you'll see, and the reason that question got brought up, because in this, in the city manager's report is your list of all the kind of code violations. That could be expanded, you know, but it's all there.
Any other questions from council regarding the city manager's report? Okay, then that brings us to the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for consideration during the regular agenda?
Like to remove G5.
Can you, sorry, guys, I don't have my stuff in front of me. Can you tell me which one is G5?
Sure. So G5 will be removed from the consent agenda. That is Consider Resolution Number 2024-41, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with project surveillance to perform construction observation services for the Congo Lane Drainage Improvements Project.
I'd also like to, I'd like to pull off 2024-40. I can't see the G, look, G4, thank you.
Okay, G4 will be considered at the top of the regular agenda.
Just to state, I'm not having, I'm not unprepared. I'm having an access issue.
I can vouch for that. She is. Any other, does any other council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and place on the regular agenda? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The consent agenda passes unanimously. So we are now going to consider item number G4, Consider Resolution 2024-40, adopting an acceptable use of information technology resources policy and email policy, and a security awareness and training policy for the mayor and city council members. Abram Siffert, Director of Information Technology.
So I'll introduce this while he's coming out. He's the one that runs the cameras for us, so he'll be out momentarily. But this is to implement IT user policies for the city council members. These policies are designed to provide a clear framework for the safe and responsible utilization of the city's IT resources, with the ultimate focus of safeguarding the city's assets and data, as well as protecting the end users. If questions have, if councilors have specific questions, Abram can answer those as well.
I just wanted to get clarification of, is, how is this different than the one for city employees?
So, so this one is dictated by council. So council would pass it, and then council is in charge of enforcing it. It's a similar verbiage to what the employees have to abide by, but we took out anything that wouldn't fall under like what the authority we would have to dictate. Like there's a social media policy on our user policy, which wouldn't fall on y'all.
Can you tell me if there are more security trainings for council than what is required by the state of Texas?
No.
That was my big question.
I'll be honest, I kind of, I kind of have the same question because it did look a little bit like the document was the employee document and got council policy slapped on the bottom. I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out kind of if, was it, well, is there a concern that, because I'm trying to sort of in my head, think of how this would work in terms of, I understand that it's, largely, this is a formal process to create enforceability, but does this now mean that if a council member is, you know, illegally using TikTok on their phone, which by the way, now it's against state law to use them on public devices. Let's say they have a, or not a phone, because most of us don't think of phones. Let's say on their council computer, they're accessing TikTok. Does this now mean that council is going to be tasked with, you know, censuring a council member and having all of this done in that manner? I guess I'm just kind of having a hard time picturing how this all works out in reality.
I mean, to a degree, yeah. It would be up to council to say, if somebody's misusing city equipment, I don't think I or Austin can go and just say, no, we're taking back your laptop. We would report the issue, and then it would be up to council to enforce the policy.
Can I pose another vantage point? Versus where it's policing, is this more in line to have it a policy that is intact for us to apply for more grants?
We do have to be compliant with all the state and federal regulations when it comes to information technology security. And that's what the state training is required. If we are not compliant with that state training, we don't get any of the grants that we get. So that is a piece of it, and there are other IT-related grants that we're hoping to go after, but we need to make sure we've got all these policies and everything in here. As Abram mentioned, it is very similar to the staff policy, but I control that staff piece. I don't control the councilors, and so that's why this says the council will be the one that would actually enforce the policy.
And just so that council's aware, I mean, the enforceability of this, and why we keep saying that, is that if you look at the penalty, that's not, you're not removed from council or anything, and there's no censure provisions, anything like that. It's just that whatever the IT device that might be provided by the city to you, you may, I mean, again, with consistent violations of it, there's a possibility that that IT connection in you may be removed. That's the penalty for not following this.
But having this policy helps us with grants.
Does, having this policy, if not, if we don't have this policy, will we no longer receive grants? Like, can you tell me for certain that if we don't, if we choose not to pass this, does that mean that we cannot get grants?
I think it would impact our ability to go after some IT-based grants, but the other FEMA grants and those types of things, not having this policy would not impact that, to my knowledge.
I kind of struggle with the concept of policy for fun.
I'm fine with the policy if it affects grants in any way.
Well, I think what I'm hearing is that the grants are contingent upon council members and city staff, all following applicable state laws that are already in place, that definitely, definitely do apply to us and do have very clear consequences. I think the, I guess the question is the added value of this that is written largely as a employee policy, as opposed to a council policy. Because there are other things as well that I was a little worried about, and I wish I'd taken this and kind of like marked it up. There was something regarding sensitive data and having it on personal devices. I, I literally, this is my device. I frequently, when I'm at home, use my home PC to access my city email. I get a little worried about unnecessarily pigeonholing council members who are volunteering their time on the side into, you know, only using city devices in order to get certain things done, or at least creating a concern that we're maybe violating a policy that might then further restrict us. I understand from an employee standpoint, because that's their job. I work at a place where I have very clear rules that I have to follow regarding data protection and all of that. I just feel like council is a little bit different situation than a city employee in most instances, when it comes to data and devices and things of that nature.
I don't, I don't agree with that. I mean, I think it, we are employees in a sense, and I think we need to follow the same types of policies, especially when it become, you know, comes to data and data security. I mean, I work for one of the most secure organizations in the world, and I don't know how many multi-factor authentications I have to go through on a daily basis to actually do my job. So I, it doesn't bother me that there's a policy in place. And I think it's, it's really, I mean, you hear, we just got a letter from AT&amp;T saying that our personal information had been compromised, and now it's out on the dark web for anybody and everybody to see. So I'm very sensitive to the fact that I, that's what we're trying to protect, is not only our data from a council perspective, but our employees' data and our residents' data that we potentially would have connectivity to, even though we don't have access to.
Yeah, along those lines, I mean, I don't know how many city employees have laptops that they can take home and use, and that's not necessarily material. But there's six, six of us here that more than likely work far more at our home on city business than we do at city, city offices. And, and so I think it's important that there's at least structure, and not necessarily a form of penalty, but guidance, rather, to guide us. And my idea might be if there are questions and we want to change the tone of this in some way or have questions about certain items, we, we move this to June, where we can further discuss this and bring it back either on consent or regular agenda with proposed changes that we submit to Austin.
Yeah.
I agree.
I would at least want to see us refined a bit. Maybe, I think the, the things that probably are going to be most applicable to council can probably be summed up in a few pages, as opposed to this policy. Yeah, I do think an elected official's in a fundamentally different position when it comes to data and things of that nature, as opposed to somebody who regularly handles, you know, personal information of residents. Because we generally don't get that information. There's very rare occasion that we get anything highly sensitive, because we're setting policy. We're not, we're not handling day-to-day activity.
That said, without going into the details, we do have access points into the city. And I'm sure those access points are mitigated as much as possible, as much can be extended. It's just, we need to be aware that there, there's a slight risk, no matter how slight.
Oh, no, I understand that, and that's what I'm saying. It's, it's, I'm not saying there's no risk. I'm just saying that I think there is a fundamental difference there. And also, based on the trouble I usually have getting into my email, I think if I can't get into my email, no one else can, so we probably would. At least on that front, we're doing an okay job. But yeah, I, I understand the need for it. It just, it probably just needs to be refined quite a bit for, for our role. So I assume that's the consensus. If everyone's okay with that, we'll just take no action. Based, I assume staff has enough feedback to kind of understand.
And we'll await your red lines and markups on it.
I'm more than happy to do that. We'll see what other cities do and go from there. But I do appreciate it. I, I know we do want to be very, very conscientious about how devices and IT resources are being used. So I think it's, it's a good thing to have a discussion about this and see what we can do to help improve that. So we'll, we'll get there. Okay, then we are going to move along. We have one other consent agenda item that was pulled off and that is item G5. Consider Resolution Number 2024-41, Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into An Agreement with Project Surveillance Incorporated to Perform Construction Observation Services for the Congo Lane Drainage Improvement Project. Robert Basfret, Assistant City Manager.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council. City of Jersey Village has received a proposal from Project Surveillance Incorporated to provide professional services for the Congo Lane Drainage Improvements Project. This project aims to enlist the expertise of PSI in overseeing construction activities, ensuring adherence to project specifications and drawings. If approved, Project Surveillance will play a crucial role in monitoring daily operations carried out by contractors, guaranteeing compliance with established guidelines. This entails meticulous documentation through accurate daily construction reports, supplemented by photographs and videos. Moreover, PSI will collaborate closely with city staff to oversee critical construction tasks, therefore contributing to the project's success. Project Surveillance is a reputable Texas-based firm specializing in construction inspection services. They post a team of certified inspectors equipped with training in public works, engineering, construction, inspection and project management basics. Past city collaborations between PSI and the City of Jersey Village include the notable projects such as Seattle Street Reconstruction Project, the Emergency Tahoe Sanitary Rehabilitation Project. In these instances, PSI's involvement significantly contributed to the project progress and quality. Additionally, staff have uncovered numerous issues with past infrastructure-related projects that lack dedicated inspection services, highlighting the role that PSI will play in enhancing workmanship and project outcomes. Overall, PSI brings extensive experience, expertise and a track record of success to the table and their proposed involvement in the Congo Lane Drainage Improvement Project suggests an uphold the city's standards and successful project completion. The cost of this will come from the overall Congo Lane Drainage Improvements Project funding. It is a piece of the overall cost of the project that is factored into the budget. This is a professional service, which means we do not have to go out for public bids for this work and Project Surveillance only needs to present a statement of qualifications which is included with this line item.
Okay, thank you. Discussion amongst council on this item?
Sure. One, I pulled this off, one, just because I think anytime we're spending money, we need to do it in front of the public. But two, also as a notice that Congo Construction is coming up really soon and it's part of the bond that was citizens approved and, you know, I think this is a good way to monitor, make sure that money is money well spent. Even though it's spending money to make sure money is well spent, it's, it's quality control and we seem to have had good, good success with this company in the past. And with that, I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-41.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to the top of our actual regular agenda. Item H1, Consider Resolution Number 2024-43, Electing a Mayor Pro Tem. I'm not going to read the memo, I'm just going to mention that our mayor pro tem, as everyone found out at our last meeting, serves in the role of mayor when the mayor is not around, is not available or incapacitated. Hopefully not. I think I did that joke last year too, so sorry. And our current mayor pro tem is, is our mayor pro tem, Michelle Mitchum. And so of course we have to, to select a mayor pro tem each year around this time. So I would take nominations at this time.
I will nominate Michelle. I think she's done a fabulous job and would like to see her continuing the role.
I'll second that motion. Sounds good.
All right, then I will consider that to be a, a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2024-43 with Michelle Mitchum as mayor pro tem, correct?
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem. That brings us to item H2, Consider Resolution Number 2024-44, Assigning Council Members to Serve as Liaison to Various City Committees and Boards. This one, I am going to refer back to the memo just to make sure we've got all of our ducks in a row. Let's see, Council Members Serve as Liaisons to All City Boards and Committees. In this capacity, council members primarily serve to represent the desires of the council of the board, of the council to the board. There are no established procedures for assigning liaison positions with the recent election. The TERS 2 and TERS 3 boards do not have liaisons appointed. Those were filled by James Singleton. The, this agenda item has been placed to allow council members to fill any vacant positions and adjust other positions as desired. I'm not going to read out the entire current assignment, everyone's got that in front of them. I will say that generally just as custom, but obviously it's not a requirement. We've usually allowed existing council members, if they so desired, to retain their current assignments. But if there's any council members who maybe they, they are thinking that they might like to try something different, certainly I think that would be something we could look at, so.
I just want to say I actually, since we've, there, some changes have been made to the, I guess we can call it structure of the boards I'm on or that I liaison-ish liaison to. I'm happy keeping what I have if, unless somebody feels very strongly about Board of Adjustments. It's popular, I know.
I don't think anyone feels strongly about Board of Adjustment.
I didn't know if Connie's background would be appropriate there or if you wanted to scooch it on. I didn't really know if your background had a conflict if it was Board of Adjustments or not on the legality of that.
You mean mine with teaching? Because that's like US history.
With Connie's being on the mud district.
Oh, oh, because she's on the mud district, yeah.
There shouldn't be any problem.
I don't think so.
We can talk later if you want, but if you're super interested in ZBA stuff, then go right at it.
I'm fine with Jennifer continuing her work.
I think Jennifer is taking one for the team and she's doing great and we owe you a box of chocolate.
How do, how do other council members feel about their current assignments?
I'm fine.
I, I enjoy serving with Rick Faircloth and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I adore Doris and I adore Parks and Rec, so.
So that, that leaves, so the vacant, current vacant positions are TERS 2 and TERS 3 boards, which have varying degrees of meeting frequency just depending on need. Sometimes they might not meet, but once a year, sometimes they might meet quarterly, just varies.
I'm happy to die there.
I'll tell you this, much, much more interesting than the Board of Adjustment, either, either version, so.
I'm offended.
I served on, at least on one of those, I know, it's boring, so. So then that, it sounds to me like everyone keeping their existing assignment and Council Member Rossi being assigned as liaison to TERS number 2 and TERS number 3. Does anyone want to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to approve the assignments.
I'll second.
So we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-44, Assigning Council Members to Their Existing Positions with Council Member Rossi and TERS 2 and TERS 3, and then we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item H3, Consider Resolution Number 2024-45, Reviewing and Accepting the 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and the 2023 Single Audit Reports. Isabel Cato, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We have Ben Cohen, he's from Belheiri Pechasic, he's our auditor and he will be here to make the presentation of our, of our financial reports.
Hello, I'm Ben Cohen. I'm here to present the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Congratulations to the new city council members. Just to let you know, once a year, I, our auditor comes in and audits the city's financial statements and this information is as of September 30th, 2023. So there's various rules that require the city to have a, a financial statement audit, for instance, with your grants or with your bonds and, and different federal laws require that. So this has to get done within the nine months after year end. Also, as the city also submits to the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Financial Excellency. It allows you to officially call it an annual comprehensive financial report. The city received that for the fiscal year 22 report. We believe that the city will also receive that for fiscal 23. I'm going to be brief, I even have my little, I'm going to give you the Reader Digest so you even have a timer here to try to do this as quick as possible, but feel free to ask any questions if you have any. I'm going to cover five sections, five areas of this annual comprehensive financial report. If you would, turn to page 17. 17 through 19 is the letter, is our opinion letter. And I just want to snapshot or summarize the second paragraph. This is where we give our opinion. We've given the city, in summary, we've given the city a clean opinion. It's just saying that the city's financial statements are reported based off of general accepted accounting principles. The remainder of the letter talks about the different responsibilities. Just to take note, it talks about management's responsibility, that's awesome. That's Cato, Ms. Cato, she's been wonderful with providing us the information, open book, just giving us everything so that we can ensure that we can make sure that these are reported based off of general accepted accounting principles. And then on page 18, you can see our responsibilities, auditors and the different responsibilities over different sections. As far as financial highlights, if you would, turn to page 26. This is just a good snapshot of your statement and net position. This is your full accrual statements. You'll, you'll see on the last two columns, fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 23. And if you go to the last number, the city's net position has increased by 5.5 million. You can also see this information for 10 years on pages 108 and 109. If you can look at where your city was at 10 years ago and you see that 10 years ago, your net position was 65 million and now it's 116 million. So what that tells me is that the city's just growing and it's also developing and over time. A lot of that could be also inflation too, but we'd expect a city that's continuing to, to move forward and, and doing things what they're supposed to be doing to gradually increase. And so a lot of that increase comes from infrastructure increase. You're utilizing grants and also just somewhat, some of the signing fund balance for capital projects, but a lot of that growth is from that. The next page I'm going to cover is page, is on page 42. So this is your fund level statements. And the, the column I'm going to zero in on is the general fund column. It's the furthest, is the column to the left. And so the only thing I wanted to point out here is that your, your ending general fund balance is roughly 14, 14.5 million, excuse me, 14.3 million. And one of the things that a lot of people in the government finance world talk about is comparing that number to your general fund expenditures. And that, what Government Finance Officers Association recommends is that you have roughly 25% of general fund balance. That general fund balance is 25% of your expenditures. And so y'all far exceed that and that's perfect. You're about around, I guess, 80%, that's roughly 10, nine months. So that's a good amount to be, so it's, you never want it to be really, it, it just depends where you're at. Some, some cities have it more than a year, that's probably maybe rather high, but you know, typically cities try to stay within at least 25% a year. And so that's, that's solid, that lets us know that you have some reserves. The next page I'm going to cover is page 84. This is your budget to actual for your general fund. It resembles what's on page 42, the actual amounts do, but the area that I'll, I'll zero in on is the expenditure section in the far right column. And as you see, there is no negative budget variances. It just lets the auditors know, public know that, that the city stayed within legal level, the legal level of control. And the last thing I'm going to cover, finally, last thing, see on time, doing good there. It's a single audit, it's that, it's that letter. It says, "Single Audit." Because the city spent more than $750,000 in federal grant dollars for fiscal year 23, it required the city to have a single audit. I won't go over the letters, but in summary, we didn't have any findings to note there. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions from council regarding this report? One thing I will ask about is pension liability. That's something people are always nervous about, but I thought you, might be a good thing to highlight.
I remember you asking that one two years ago. So if you go to page 86, you'll see that, you'll see that this is your, this is your, that far, it's not the last number on the page in each column, but it's, it says the net pension liability. You'd see that it, and that includes like, so you have your pension liability and then you have the assets within that, that plan. And so that's the net. It was roughly 3.1 million back in 2014 and then 2022, 6.1 million. Now, this is, this is based off your measurement year, which is as of December 31st, 2022. And so that's, that's roll forward into September 30th, 2023 financial statements because obviously they can't, they can't, they have to get that audit done first before we do this audit. And so, but that number is reflective within your financial statements. And so it did increase, but you, you see your net position also increased. Over time, you'll see those numbers increase unless if, if you've changed your funding. There's some cities that decide to get 100% funding and so they'll, they'll contribute more than the required contribution amount. You can see the contribution amounts on the next page over the last 10 years, on page 88. And this is based off a fiscal year. And so for 2014, it was roughly 679,000 was the city's contribution. And then in 2023, it was 1.1 million. And again, if you look on these schedules in the statistical section, you'll see that expenditures have increased, revenues have increased, but net position has increased with, you know, cities, a lot of things are increasing. And, and so that's what we'd expect for a city that's, that's thriving.
So just generally to sum it up, if, especially compared to, I don't want to say compared to other cities because a lot of cities get themselves in trouble. I assume that these numbers generally align with what you would expect from a relatively healthy pension liability.
Yes, and of course, y'all, y'all have always, y'all, all, cities, y'all, cities, your city has always contributed over at least, at least the last 10 years, I believe, or at least in the last eight, the required contribution amount that the TMRS, Hexham Municipal Retirement System, says that you should contribute to the plan. And so they, they got actuaries that go in and, you know, do their thing and, and so needless to say, city, if you continue to do that, you're, you're staying in line. you're staying in line, and so I mean, it kind of tells you what percentage of payroll that is, and you can see that it's hovered about the same. It looks like it has, it's that low, it's that it's that percentage number on page 88 and 89, and you can see that the city stayed relatively flat there. So it's actually, it looks like it kind of decreased a little bit over time. So that's a good sign, but other than that, I can't really say, you want consistency there, you know. There has been some cities that decide one year to fund more than they have to, or surpass the required contribution amount that the actuary set, but it's, it's, I mean, that's, that's their decision.
The key is just making sure that it's manageable and you don't get yourself in too much trouble.
Yes, I think that, given those percentages, and of course, Austin, Isabella is probably on, probably more on top of that one than I am, so. But it's up to management city to kind of make that decision, but I think it's staying pretty good there.
Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, unless council had further discussion, we've got a resolution in front of us, I'd entertain a motion at this time.
I'll motion to approve Resolution 2024, oh, I'm sorry, I have it right in front of me, dash, is it 45?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. And that brings us to item H4, Consider Ordinance Number 2024-14 Amendmenting the Golf Course Budget for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2023 and Ending September 30, 2024 in the Amount Not to Exceed $75,000 by Increasing Revenue Line Item 11808551 Green Fees and by Increasing Expense Line Item 11818515 Consultant Fees, Approving the Proposal from Chet Williams Design LLC to Conduct a Golf Course Master Plan and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute All Documents with Chet Williams Design LLC Concerning These Consulting Services. Robert Basford, Assistant City Manager.
Yeah, good evening, council. Staff is seeking a budget amendment to bolster our green fee revenue line item by $75,000, and as well as our consultant fee expenditure item by the equivalent amount. Revenues are doing better than budgeted for this fiscal year, and we're very confident that we will see an increase in revenue this year. This additional funding is to initiate a comprehensive master plan for the golf course designed to transform and optimize our course. With our new clubhouse and the completion of the convention space in the coming months, we want to make sure we have a solid plan to keep the course in the best possible condition as well. Chet Williams Design has been selected to deliver a range of services as part of this master plan, focusing on several critical areas. First, their team will evaluate the current conditions and aspirations for the golf course. This includes understanding the specific goals relative to the city of Jersey Village and objectives from the club's perspective, conducting a thorough site investigation and identifying potential for enhancements. The consultation process will involve ongoing discussion with stakeholders to refine these goals and integrate them into the planning and design framework. The analysis will cover various physical and functional aspects of the golf course, such as drainage systems, irrigation, soil conditions, bunkers, cart paths, the overall playability and aesthetic of the golf course. This will enable a detailed understanding of the existing challenges and opportunities that the master plan can address. The deliverables of the master plan will include a graphical representation of the proposed improvements, a detailed hold-by-hold description of these changes, and a prioritized list of work items. This prioritization will be developed in collaboration with the club to ensure that aligns with the most pressing needs and available resources. Additionally, Chet Williams Design will provide a preliminary cost estimate for each proposed improvement, ensuring that council can make informed decisions about the allocation of funds and the project's overall feasibility. Chet Williams has designed over 16 courses across the world. He's done Houston Oaks Country Club, Royal Oaks Country Club, and Horseshoe Bay Resort, Summit Rock, took course, just to name a few. He's also worked for Jack Nicholas, with Nicholas Design, the golf course design company, for 24 years, completing 25 golf courses as well. Course design, remodeling, renovation, and master planning are some of the services provided. He knows the golf course industry well, and we believe he will provide a quality master plan for us. This strategic investment in the golf course master plan designed to enhance the value and appeal of our golf course, ensuring the course meets the expectations of our community and visitors alike. We believe this plan, this plan will pave the way for significant improvements that will benefit all stakeholders involved. The plan is estimated to take three to four months to complete. That would put the completion at the end of September. We would use this plan to start improvements this upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Discussion amongst council on this?
I just want to confirm, this is money that we've earned over and above at the golf course. This is, this is coming from golf course revenue. It is not coming from the general fund. So the golf course is fully supporting itself, and we have some extra that we want to be able to use in order to identify improvements. And similar to our comprehensive plan for the city, this is a master plan for the golf course. I do sit on the golf course committee, and we had a meeting on Monday. Just some examples of things that we need to start thinking about. I know there's a lot of, for the golfers out there, the greens have always, have been a concern recently. Greens do reach a useful life, at which point they typically have to be replaced. And so part of this master plan is to look at what the options are, how much longer we can go before we have to do that, and what our economical and timelines are in order to be able to do that with, you know, minimizing the impact to the overall revenue of the course. So I think it's, it's a, one, it's a positive thing that we're seeing the golf course, you know, take off. And then two, that we're, you know, planning ahead and trying to get ahead of some of the things that we don't want to let fall behind.
Well, if there's no other discussion, I'd entertain a motion on the ordinance at this time.
I'll motion to approve ordinance 2024-46. I'll second.
Just to make sure we've got it clear, and maybe I'm misreading it, I've got ordinance 2024-14.
I'm sorry, yeah, 46.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve ordinance 2024-14. Do we have a second?
I seconded.
Oh, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. I'm going to start on this end, on the mayor and council comments with Mayor Pro Tem Mitchum.
Thank you again, everybody. Welcome, Connie. I hope it was a good first go. I want to say that the youth triathlon was canceled because of the rain, and it has been rescheduled to Sunday, May 26. But good news for you, if you missed out on the first one, because you can register for this one still until the 25th. I know they had, oh, I can't even remember, Doris, how many, they had, like, yeah, like 60, 60 registr-
75.
Like youth, oh, 75, a lot. So this is going to be a very fun youth event. For its first go-around, we usually expect around 30 applicants or people to participate, and so 75 is huge. So if you have a youth who would want to partake in this cool first adventure, I highly recommend it.
Councilmember Shepherd.
No comments from me this evening.
Councilmember Wasson.
I'll pick up your slack. First, welcome, Connie. We're going to enjoy, have fun over the next year. Also, thank you to James Singleton. I hope he's out having fun with his family right now. Thank you for your years of service to the community, not just up here, but all out there. James, Andrew said it best, he's an incredible person, doing a lot of great things in our community, and we're blessed to have him. The last thing is, there's four things I want to point out that are on the city website. I know several speakers spoke about the golf course, or golf course bridge. There's a feedback form on the website that you can go in and leave your comments and ideas. As of last Monday, we had received 20 of those, and I'd hope we'd get more, and can get more. There's also a part about the pool, and to give feedback on the pool and ideas on that. And there was a meeting here last Monday, this past Monday, where a person from a pool company came and revealed some report, a report that, that he was, had looked at the pool and gave some ideas on the future and possible next steps with that. That, that's actually on a video on the website, or will be soon. The last two things are comprehensive plan, which I know Ashley mentioned, and also the Charter Review Committee. Those are two big things that will have a long-lasting impact on the city, so if you're looking for an opportunity to get involved, check those out, and if you have any questions, there's a roster of people that used to be on the committees. You can ask them about their experience, or ask a member of council, and we'll be happy to give you feedback and ideas on that. So please, these are great ways to participate in the city, and it's all on the website, so thank you, everybody.
Councilmember Rossi.
Okay, I'm not going to read all of it. Congratulations, Drew and Jennifer. I just wanted the city of Jersey Village to know that it is a great honor and responsibility that I accept this role representing you. I promise to carry out my duties with the utmost integrity and fairness, ensuring that your voices and concerns of our community are heard. So thank you.
I'd like to echo the sentiments, sorry, do you want me to wait for you to say my name?
It's all right.
Okay. I'd like to echo the sentiments of my fellow council members in welcoming Connie. We're excited, and good luck to James. I do want to point out that by the time we meet again, we will have a whole new group of graduates from Jersey Village High School, and very happy for them, and that's about it.
Okay, I'll just echo what everyone else has said, welcome our newest council member. I think, I don't know how many years ago it was, that on this dais, the council was made up entirely of men. And now it's just Drew and I. So I, I think having different perspectives from different people is a very good thing, and we definitely welcome Councilmember Rossi. Also wanted to echo what was said about the commissions, the comprehensive plan review committee, and, or, I'm sorry, update committee, and the charter review commission. The reason I emphasize that is because comprehensive plan can be kind of fun in a lot of ways, because you are talking about, you know, what does the city look like in 10, 20, 30 years? What are the things that maybe we could bring to the city in terms of development and infrastructure and amenities? The Charter Review Commission is extraordinarily important, because it is essentially the constitution of our city. It is the fundamental document which describes the rules by which your city government operates. And so anytime people come up to me and say, "Why doesn't X, Y, and Z get put up to a vote of citizens?" Or "Why doesn't council do this?", I would say about 80% of the time, well, probably 80% of the time it's state law, but there's a big chunk of that also that comes from our city charter. And so every four years, we ask citizens to form a committee or a commission that reviews that and looks to determine whether or not that city charter is still functioning the way it needs to for our city to operate well and to serve its citizens well. So if you have an interest in that, then I would highly encourage you to apply. So that is all I have. Just so everyone knows, even though we are adjourn, we are about to adjourn this regular session, council is going to reconvene in the meeting room back here to continue our budget workshop that we started at 6 o'clock. So just wanted to make sure that if anyone was interested in watching that, that will be happening. It's another public meeting that will be happening in our meeting room. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.